And then click on that window.
This is, this is her death.
Doesn't seem to be one too.
Well, what a treasured pleasure.
There she is.
Hi Pete.
Man, he should have been at the.
You can quit looking for Pete, I found you.
I see they're honoring all these long time. Been right there. Dorm fast.
Oh, really?
And. Yeah, there were several of them. Pretty good.
Go Dan, go chair it.
Yeah, I'm gonna go chair from here.
Yeah, he's getting chair. What'd she say?
He's fixed it. You're awesome. We knew you could do it.
We appreciate Veronica stepping up.
She's handier than an extra bucket. Handier than an extra bucket.
Did you lock the door Veronica?
No, he would, he not there for I did and then he headed for California.
Oh no, it's Cindy alert. Run for your life, it's Cindy.
Good to see you Cindy.
Hi Cindy Lou.
Did you?
Yeah, it was pretty quiet around here.
How come I don't? Can you hear the shop?
Huh?
Commissioners.
Yeah, and she didn't hurt me or nothing.
Hey Dan, commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. Let's keep it that way.
You know, I just noticed I don't actually have an agenda in my packet, but oh well.
Morning Daniel.
Morning. Kind of feel like the Wizard of Oz here.
Kind of look like him too, yeah.
Yeah. Hi Cheryl. I'm, I'm feeling better. Okay Veronica, just let me know when you're ready.
In 12 seconds. Nice Pastor Tim. How are you?
You ready?
Oh, 30 seconds.
30 seconds? Yeah, my computer, my laptop is weird. It's showing it's only eight o'clock. I tried to adjust the time. It won't let me adjust it. I don't know. Lisa's got the date right.
It thinks it's still in Boise.
Apparently.
Well, it'd be an hour later than.
Be an hour earlier. I'd be, I'd be 10 o'clock instead of nine o'clock, but it shows eight o'clock and I, I don't know why it's not automatically syncing, but anyway.
It's wanting to go to Alaska, I guess.
Apparently.
Hey you're on.
Ron, okay. Okay, it's, it's nine o'clock. It's time on our schedule for our weekly business meeting. If you'll all stand. Looks like we have a pastor here. Go over to some prayer.
We thank you Father for the privilege of being able to come together today to conduct the business for the county. We thank you for Idaho and, and the privileges and freedoms that you've given us. We ask that you'll bless us as we deliberate and people share their thoughts and concerns. And we just thank you Lord for your presence in our lives, in our county and, and in your purpose that we might move and, and have your direction and everything that we do. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
And Commissioner Conde, if you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Who's up?
I am. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Nobody.
Okay, does anybody wish to make a public comment?
Others nice.
Okay, well, seeing none, we'll move along then.
All right. Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment about the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Next Clerk's office. Who do we have? Mike or Nancy?
Hey, good morning, everybody. Commissioners, before you, I have fiscal year 21 claims batch number 27, the amount of $1,585,012.46. And demand batch number 27, the amount of $345,917.50 totaling $1,930,929.96 for your.
Okay, thanks Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY 21 claims and demands in batch number 27 totaling $1,930,929.96.
So check that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Go ahead Doug. I can just see your hand. There you go, now I can see your head.
Perfect. Um, so on your list, and I assume this was stuff that was demands.
Yes.
Um, you, you have 172,000 for Freightliner?
That would be for a Roden Bridge, most likely.
Yeah. Couple of trucks.
You, you brought the trucks or did they? The, the physical trucks or, or did you have them move something lots of stuff?
So that would be a purchase of the trucks.
Purchase of the truck, okay.
I believe. The commissioner said that go by them.
Right.
So, and 41,000 for Motor Truck Inc.
For what?
Motor Truck Inc.
That was for.
Okay, um, 98,000 going to. Wessex Bank. No, that was going to B O C O T R. F T O. P S.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I'll talk, ask you later.
Water.
That was $98,000. Alphabet soup.
Okay.
Um, okay, and there's on one other 2,000 Rocky Point Inventory.
Uh, Rock, who's purchased Rock.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other question or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Go ahead Mike.
Okay, thank you. Next I have EMS claims batch number 27, the amount of $29,582.94. And demand patch 27, the amount of $6,474.55 totaling $36,057.49 for your.
Thanks Mike.
All right, I move to approve payment of the FY 21 EMS claims and demands in batch number 26 totaling $36,057.49.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you Mike.
Thank you, and I'll get that answered before this meeting's out, so everybody knows.
Okay, great. Thanks Mike. Okay, let's move along to Treasurer Cheryl Peel.
I'm Pizzalotto, Bonner County Treasurer's Office for the record. Today we are asking approval to transfer the excess tax sale funds to the State Treasurer's Office. The time for the record, or the recorded parties of interest and the record owners to make claims for this overage has passed. The state has better resources to manage these funds and locate all the owners. The amount that we are asking to transfer is 22,803.33.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution, uh, assigned to transfer the excess state sales funds to state treasurer, the time for the recorded parties of interest and record, record owners, recorded owners. To make a claim for the overage has passed. The state has better resources to manage the funds and locate the owners. The resolution has been approved by legal.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment on this? This is fairly routine. Okay, go ahead Doug.
Resolution number please.
I just said to be assigned, you know, we're short staffed right now. I don't know that we have that right off the top of our head, do we? Okay.
Okay, any other question or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Let's go to Recreation Pete Hughes.
Mother everybody, that was medical expenses.
Well, thanks Mike.
Morning, everybody. Pete Hughes, Recreation Manager for the record. For consideration this morning, we have a memorandum of understanding between Bonner County and Idaho Fishing Game. Attached is a memorandum of understanding between Bonner County and Idaho Department of Fishing Game. This agreement includes specifics for work to be performed on Bonner County's right of way at the intersection of Johnson Creek Road and Dirt Island Road. This project is designed to create a safe designated parking area adjacent to the sportsman access on Clark Fork River. Funding will be provided by Avista Utilities at approximately $16,000. This has been reviewed by legal. And just to get anybody up to speed that's not aware, there's a, we, we have somewhat of a parking issue along the, the county's road out there and we're trying to, uh. Actually Fishing Game is, is really trying to create a, a safe parking area for boaters and, and recreators to access the boat launch at Dirt Island.
Okay, thanks Pete.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the agreement between Bonner County and Idaho Department of Fishing Game. For parking area adjacent to sportsman's access on Clark Fork River with funding to be provided by Avista Utilities at approximately $16,000.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment Doug?
I'm, I'm just looking to get a better idea of where this is. Is this south of 200 and east of Clark Fork in that?
So, you take the River Road across and hang it right on Johnson Creek and you go out about a mile and a half to where the Dirt Creek Bridge is and there's a sportsman's access right there. Okay, it's a fairly primitive, but we get, there's, so there's about a 350 foot stretch of county right of way that they're removing soil, placing rocks, so there's parking.
Any, any idea you can give me of why Avista is funding this? I mean, it's a nice thing, but.
I think just between them and Fishing Game, they're looking for, for more ways for the, the sportsmen to access their, their launches and, um. Uh, I also between speaking with Bonner County, the road department and the parking issues that have arisen out there by people parking on the roadway itself, this is, this gets them all the way off and. Out of the traffic.
Plus it's part of. The reason, one of the reasons we're involved is because it's impacting the county road traffic. Um, so we're trying to get the, Avista is, is happy to help us out by getting that, those people that are parking out there to use the, that are using the boat ramp to get them off the county road, so.
Plus it's part of their licensing. Whenever they go to be licensed, um, they have to agree to do certain amount of work and it's a dollar figure and so they fund. Not only that, they fund stream restoration and all kinds of different things like that.
That makes a great lot deal sense to me. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else wish to speak? I've got it. I can't see, fortunately when Doug raises his hand, I can see his hand come up in the camera here, so anyone else wants to speak, just come to the mic.
You're good here.
Okay, good. Move on. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving along to Roden Bridge, Jason.
Morning. Roden Bridge Jason. So, this is some grant or easements for a project we got going out on the East River Slide. In Bonner County. And Bonner County applied for and was awarded federal highway grants through LTAC to repair recurring slides causing road closures on East River Road. These projects require drainage easement, easements on the adjoining private property to accommodate the deep roadbed drainage system. So we actually got a big sock system. That's put into the road that's draining the water out and then it comes out on top of the ground and runs down the hillside. And there, we actually, let's see, get back to where I was at, I quit reading. So there's actually three, eight, three agreements that are included in this. One's a permanent easement for the drainage system as per the project design and plans. Two is the right of way contract that specifies the purchase price of $5,000 for obtaining the purchase easement or the permanent easement. And three is the agreement to relocate the permanent easement should the location of the permanent easement as designed prove problematic for the property owner. This money will be reimbursed by 92 plus percent from LTAC. And Roden Bridge recommends the commissioners to approve the easement agreements.
Great, thanks Jason.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Bonner County Commissioners approve the three Humphrey easements and purchase agreements and sign appropriately.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Perfect, that's a better way to see it. Thanks, whoever's controlling that. Now I can see the audience. Okay, seeing none. By the way, I want to congratulate Jason on one of the shortest motions I've ever seen out of Roden Bridge. You appreciate that?
No.
Okay, that being said, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Okay, moving along to, uh, who is this?
Airport Dave.
Airport Dave.
Come on you guys, I just get the volume working and you forget who I am? It's.
No, I don't have an agenda in front of me, but I have all the, I have the packet, so I'm trying to go by what's the next, what does it say on the next thing? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you commissioners. I've got three items for you today. The first one is the contract signing for the 2022 Boyer Road Relocation Project, which is an FAA funded project. The contract is in the amount of $542,183.49 and that contract was awarded to Northwest Grading in May of this year. And we just finally got the contract documents for you to sign. The project consists of relocating a portion of Boyer Road outside the runway protection zone, building a retaining wall to support that move and rebuilding the sidewalk and bike path. I recommend signing this contract. And just before you go into the motion, uh, there's a typo in that motion. So, uh, if you could take out runway repair and just leave in the project with Northwest Grading, that would be great. Thank you.
Yep. Probably repairing what?
Uh, and replace it with what, Dave?
Just take out the runway repair, two words and leave the project portion in there. This is, uh, I cut and pasted this from another motion, sorry.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County sign the contract for this project with Northwest Grading in the amount of $542,183.49.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Nothing Doug? Okay, seeing none.
Yeah, kind of a.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a while. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Go ahead Dave, item number two.
Thank you. Number two, uh, this is a relocation advance payment. This payment is the amount of $19,070.64 is an advance on FAA approved relocation expenses for a recent property acquisition at Sandpoint Airport. As part of the property acquisition grant and is subject to 100% reimbursement through the AIP program. I recommend approving this payment.
Okay, thanks Dave.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County sign the payment in the amount of $19,070.64.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Go ahead.
Doug and Maureen both have their hands up.
Yeah, I can see him now. They just switched their views, so.
So the 19K, is this, is this coming from the FAA or is this county money? Who, whose money is this?
FAA will reimburse 100% of us.
As expected, thank you.
Yeah, Doug, we actually paid it and we paid it advanced and then they reimburse us.
I understand that part, just open it to your pocket.
Go ahead Maureen.
Patterson for the record, just wondering where this property is in regard to the airport.
Uh, it's near the airport. With property acquisitions, we don't talk about the sellers or the location of the acquisitions due to the competitive nature of bidding and the real estate market right now.
Okay, any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Go ahead Dave, item number three.
Thank you. Uh, item number three is lease assignment for lot number 34 at Sandpoint Airport. The current lesssee of lot 34 at Sandpoint Airport, we should assign the lease to another party as allowed by the lease terms. All other lease terms, conditions, requirements and obligations remain in force. I recommend approving this assignment.
Okay, thanks Dave.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve this lease assignment for lot 34 at Sandpoint Airport. That's chairman's sign administratively.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks Dave. Let's move on to, pardon?
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to solid waste Bob Howard.
Uh, Brian or Brandon taking that.
Oh, Brandon's gonna do it. Okay, go ahead Brandon.
This is Brandon, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, Brad Staglin, Bonner County Staff Engineer. Um, we're just trying to get electrical service to the Midway Solid Waste Collection Site in Le Cleed. And in order to do that, Northern Lights requires that we sign a bunch of, uh, some construction agreements. Um, which are standard and also that we pay construction fees in the amount of $4,707.39, which will come out of solid waste.
Okay, thanks Brandon.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before me, I move to authorize the Bonner County Solid Waste Department to pay $4,707.39 for electrical service fees. Northern Lights and for the chair to sign the construction agreement forms attached to this memo.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, moving along to, uh, let's see, Justice Services, I think Will is there for, for Ron, so.
Morning everyone. Howdy, howdy, howdy. Will Hunter, uh, Bonner County Juvenile Intention phoned in for Ron today. Um, before you, we have this resolution. I'll just give you a little, um. More information because it references a credit on there and the reason for that credit is we bought a new fingerprint machine last year. And, but prior to that, we had already, um. Renewed our service agreement. But with the new machine, we got a one-year warranty. So, he talked him into giving us a credit for what we had paid for, so that's what that credit is. So, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners approve that Idemia, Identity and Security Maintenance Agreement Addendum for the term of September 23rd, 2021 until September 22nd, 2022. At a cost of $318.22, the actual cost of $1599, less credit on account of $1,217.78. Uh, for maintenance services for the fingerprint computer and printer located Bonner County Juvenile Attention Center as previously approved by legal.
Okay, thanks Will.
All right, I move to approve the Idemia Addendum for the term of September 23rd, 2021 until September 22nd, 2022. As set forth above and previously approved by legal.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Go ahead Doug.
Um, so I got the $318 part, sounds really, really good, but was, but that was with a discount we got for some money. What was the total going to be without our discount again?
$1,599.
For service and maintenance?
Yes, for one-year service agreement. If we have any issues with the computer printer or the fingerprint machine, we get IT support and if it comes out, they'll come out and work on it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Thanks Will. Moving along, let's go to HR Cindy Baker.
Good morning, Cindy Baker for the record. Uh, I'm here today to request approval for revision to our compensation policy 600. Uh, we want to add language in, uh, that policy around certification pay, uh, for identified positions that is either required or preferred. Uh, we talked about this through the budget process and in order to administer any certification pay, we need something in our policy about that.
Okay, thanks Cindy.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the compensation policy 600. The Bonner County Personnel Policy Manual effective October 5th, 2021.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any question or comment? Doug, you gonna?
Yes.
Doug, you have a go, any questions Doug?
We're good now.
He's gonna get coffee from Cindy's.
$49.95.
All righty, with seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. And that concludes our agenda for the, for this morning. Uh, sorry I couldn't be there guys, I'm still quarantined, but hopefully I'll be back soon. I'm feeling a lot better. Um, we're gonna go ahead and take a five-minute break and we'll come back with executive session. Hey Veronica, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'll bring the packet back this morning. I'll drive it in and maybe I'll just call you and have you come down and pick it up for me.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got, uh, we got locations and stuff happening out there. That's about the only thing you can throw.
What?
We talked to the white guy.
He's on, he's good. Or he's, he's on track.
Oh, great.
As long as there's not the old. We didn't really change the cost, everything.
Because it's. Yeah, I know, but we have perfect things all day long, which is. What's that? So the condition is. Do stuff all day long, so. He hasn't filed a plan. He's done the admission application. But that's, I don't know why. Well, but it happened.
It will.
Right, no, I get it. I get it.
So that's conditional. In the next two years, if they come through and they get a zone change approved, then they can.
Oh, so you keep them for two years and then if it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good to go. As long as I'm still on to the executive session.
What?
Oh, I'm told there's a message on my screen.
Let's go, let's go here. Let's go back here into this.
Fantastic.